I'm glad you're asking your father-in-law. I want you to know that was very heartfelt. And several of us make those comments. Sorry, Carol's a dear friend of all of ours. So I hope you got my text, my beat.
I did.
You did. And to our successor and all the rest of our appointees. Happy New Year and we look forward. We have a motion to go into closed session, but I think our attorney here has one item that we want to discuss and then from that we'll move to George.
Members of council, this is just a housekeeping matter. Some time ago, probably seven or eight months ago, maybe a year, almost a year ago, when we were having all those snowstorms that caused council meetings to be canceled and rescheduled, I found a section in the code that allows council to establish what a rescheduled meeting date would be at its organizational meeting. And that's what the motion is today for your consideration. You don't have to adopt it. We can follow the practice that we've been following up until now. But if you adopt this motion, it would be that if the mayor or the vice mayor and the mayor's absence determines it to be too hazardous for members to attend a meeting due to the weather or some other condition, that the meeting will be postponed until the following Tuesday. If the following Tuesday is a holiday or is otherwise not available, then the meeting would be canceled and then everything would be taken up a week after that following Tuesday, which would be the next council meeting. So this is just a housekeeping thing and it's a motion that you would have to, if you're interested in doing it, then it takes the question out of everything. The additional benefit it has that if anything was advertised for the original meeting, it does not have to be re-advertised for the second, for the replacement, rescheduled. It's for your consideration.
Let me just ask if, with George, what prompted this? I thought the process that we had, that I would normally call around and get four members to agree. I don't have a problem either way. Did something prompt this or is it just a housekeeping matter?
It's just housekeeping. I ran across the provision of the proposal and thought, well, this might be something council could adopt it, then you don't have to make this.
And then it would be automatic? And then the public and everybody know that if we do cancel it, it's the next Tuesday?
Right.
Unless it's a holiday, then there'll be council people.
Did you cancel the meeting? The clerk would say the meeting has been rescheduled for.
For the following Tuesday.
It would be date definite versus assuming.
Okay, I like that. Any discussion? Dr. Whitaker?
Makes sense for those attorneys and all that are on track to come for planning items and all, too.
Okay.
And just for your information, council members, in the event you are okay, it sounds like everybody's okay with this, because it's not on the printed agenda that we sent out to the public, you would need to add the item to your agenda.
By council.
And then you would have to actually vote on the item, as you would do any other item you add to your agenda.
Dr. Whitaker?
I do have a question in regards to that it's a fixed, it's a fixed date, considering that the council's calendar has already been preset, therefore, members have already made certain obligations based on those dates. Should the language be that it may instead of fixing it, so that that would give the mayor an opportunity to query council to see if that date is still convenient? Because we may, you may not have a quorum.
Well, the benefit, the benefit of this, of course, is to fix it. If you do, if you're going to a may situation, then you don't have the motion, just do it the way you have been doing it. Because right now, the mayor may do that anyway.
Right. So therefore, this would give, this would give the mayor and the public an opportunity to know that that's a possible date, but it should still be allowed, since it's not a fixed date on council person's calendars, that that still be a date that's available.
I think the reason I'm doing all of it is to have it fixed, so you won't have to go back in there and continue.
If for some reason, there's not going to be a quorum following Tuesday.
Just cancel the meeting.
Then that's, or is otherwise unavailable to meet.
Right.
That's covered.
Okay.
But if it's just one member who won't be here for the following Tuesday, then the council will go ahead and.
You make a valid point, because we schedule things on their odd Tuesdays. We know the second and the fourth Tuesday is already obligated.
Yeah, good point.
And council members, keep in mind, normally, if we know that the weather's going to be bad, we have enough time before the city manager even closes down City Hall, that contact is made with each of you. So at that point, we can find out if you're available the next Tuesday. And we'll know in advance whether we just need to cancel it or we can go ahead and postpone it.
Very good. So we'll take care of this action when we actually get to the open meeting. Any other discussion? I see here that there are actually two items here for a closed meeting. Discussion on the position of vice mayor and others, and then another one is consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation of Funkhouser versus City. Okay, permitted under Section 87. Okay, is there a motion to go into close?
I've moved to go into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purpose. Discussion concerning filling the position of vice mayor and of other council appointments as permitted under subsection A1, and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation of Funkhouser and Al versus City as permitted under subsection A7.
Second.
Dr. Whitaker? I'd like to move for a point of order. In particular, the closed session, I have no issue with the consultation with legal counsel. However, the discussion concerning filling the position of vice mayor and other council appointments as permitted under subsection A1. Subsection A1 doesn't particularly speak to going into closed session for what we're about to do, the vice mayor and appointments to the different boards and commissions. The Virginia Freedom of Information Act doesn't speak to these particular items as criteria for going into a closed session. So going into a closed session on these issues would be out of order with our policies that we have in place. The closed session provision within our rules and procedure speaks to, and specifically that the city attorney and the city manager may go into closed session to discuss issues. And then the other item speaks to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as being provisions for closed section, and none of these fall under either the city manager or the city attorney, nor the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Let's see what the city attorney has to say about it.
Both of the provisions, both of the sections that are cited in the motion, and you don't have a problem with the litigation. The first one is discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And that's a section under which, that's A1.
Right, I'm familiar.
Excuse me, read it again, George.
Public bodies may hold closed meetings only for the following purposes. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. And then it goes on, and the evaluation of performance of departments, and the rest of it doesn't really apply. Has to do with teacher, teaching, and that sort of thing.
Yes, Dr. Whitaker?
So which, what language in that statute are you applying to what we're about to do here as a council?
There's, it's appointments of specific officers.
And assignments.
And assignment.
Dr. Whitaker?
Right. And in that code section, I know you know there are semicolons and colons that are there, right? And commas. And so when it speaks to public officers, who are you referring to there?
Well, there's the public officer as the vice mayor.
Well, the, the position of public officer, the code makes a distinction between public officer and members of a council. And it doesn't speak to members of a council in that section. I believe 3714 distinguishes between a public officer and a member. We're, we're members, we're not public officers.
It's the same way we've been doing it for the last 20 years. Okay.
Okay. Wait. It is what?
It is the same way, this is the way council has met to discuss this, the appointment of the vice mayor for the last, there's no time.
Does anyone else have an issue?
Madam Clerk, have we, we had a motion, did we have a vote?
We had a second, yes.
And we had a second? Did we have a vote?
Yes.
No vote, we have a motion.
Chair recognizes upon order. You know, rules of order, if there's a point of order, we have to deal with the point of order. And if we could, members, if you would allow the chair to recognize you before you speak, so we can keep this going in an orderly fashion. Dr. Whitaker?
Just because something has been occurring for the past 20 years doesn't mean that it has been in proper order. And I just want to point out to the council members that I raised a point of order. Your rules and policies speak to Robert's rules of order. And you agreed to follow Robert's rules of order, not, not all of this, what we're seeing right now. Under Robert's rules of order, a point of order is not debatable. And also, a point of order is at the discretion of the chair to rule upon, not for members to vote upon. And so if we're going to have rules and procedures, we should follow them, so that we don't have chaos. And so I would respectfully ask that you would follow the rules and procedures and not practices. But since our mayor is the chair of this meeting, that is within his discretion to decide on a point of order, under Robert's rules of order.
Let me address your point as to 3714, I had a chance to look at it. And it's basically the violation in the section, and it refers to any officer, employee, or member of a public body.
Right.
And the position of vice mayor is that of an officer.
Right, but in 3714 and 3711, in 3711, it speaks to a public officer. In 3714, it says officer. Also, it mentions members of a body in 3714. That is not distinguished in 3711. And so trying to tie in this into Section 8-1, Point 1, I think would be improper. And Mr. Wilson, you have served as counsel for the school board, and that has never been a closed session item within our school board meetings.
It's never been requested, sir.
Yeah, well, if it were, if it's allowed to be, or allowed not to be, I'm raising a point of order with it that is not in line with our rules and procedures.
Point of order, as you say, is decided by the chair.
Right.
And I've given, my opinion is that the vice mayor position is as an officer of the public body. So it would be a public officer.
And. Well, what about the, what about the.
You had me recognized. Let the attorney finish, George.
If, if you feel that it's not, that the motion is not proper, or they're going into closed meeting to discuss this is not proper, you can, you may vote against it if the chair should rule that it is, it is proper.
And what about, you said vice mayor, what about the other council appointments? Where does that fall into?
It's the appointments of council members to various, it's under the same, the same code section.
I know that, I know you're trying to put it under the same code section. I'm saying what language within that section? You mentioned that a vice mayor is a public officer. What are, where do the appointments fall?
Because it's, it refers to assignments, appointments, promotion, performance, et cetera, et cetera, of specific public officers, appointees, or employees.
Right, that's, that's the appointments, appointees of specific public bodies. That's the part you're not tying into it correctly with the council. That's why I'm saying, just because it's been a practice doesn't mean that it has been proper. And so I would request that the chair would keep this as an open session for the discussion concerning the filling of vice mayor and of other council.
I've given, given my opinion, Dr. Whitaker, so it'll be up to the chair to decide.
And if you would, I appreciate the point of order, and I will make a ruling on it. I'm actually inclined to want to keep this an open session, because I don't see a reason. But I want to allow our council members for someone to convince us otherwise. And we'll go around, starting with Dr. Edmonds around in this fashion, and then I'll actually make a ruling.
Well, personally, since we've been doing it, I thought it was a great idea to do that with the vice mayor closed session, to prohibit any influence that might come from those that would bring that to this council.
A second, that, I mean, that's the way we've been doing it, that's the way I was understanding. I mean, to me, I'm, I'll be very open. I'm going to nominate Elizabeth. If somebody seconds, if not, somebody's going to nominate Page, somebody's going to second, and we're going to vote. That's what's going to happen. So y'all are going to keep it in public or out? I don't care.
Mr. Simmons?
I don't care about the vice mayor thing, but the appointments to boards and commissions, whether it's us appointing ourselves, or us appointing Susie Citizen to abort a commission, I think that's a personnel matter. This should be discussed in closed.
I agree with my colleague, Dr. Edmonds. I think doing it in closed session, you know, we debate weaknesses, strengths, and it's strictly a personnel issue. But I also agree with Danny, if push comes to shove, on the vice mayor thing at least, hey, let's, let's vote. But the committee assignments, no, they, they're definitely a personnel issue.
Sure. Dr. Edmonds? Okay. So, well, based on that, why don't, I would like for us to have the vice mayor discussion in open session, and then I would like for us to go into closed session for the committee assignments. And that is the ruling of the chair. I have, and I think you all know, I have had major concerns about this process and how we do it. And I have always yielded to the body, because the majority has said it, and no one else raised an objection but myself. And I didn't want, being the new person four years ago, and then we went through it last year, and I don't see a reason why it should go into close. I, I can go either way, but I really would like the vice mayor position, and I appreciate your raising the point of order, to be done in open session. And so with that, we will proceed in that manner. And thank you, Dr. Whitaker.
And I'm Nate Elizabeth.
I second that.
You're not voting in here, you're voting in the chamber.
You're going to vote out there, and you do have to go into closed to discuss the remaining items in the motion.
That's correct. So could we either get an amendment to the motion or reread of the motion to allow us to go in discussion for council appointments other than vice mayor? Or should, can we just modify that?
Are we doing vice mayor first?
No, we'll do the vice mayor out in open discussion.
Well, yeah, but.
Because that's where we got to vote at.
Since people are here.
We'll just do it here?
If we're that cognizant about doing it in public, and courtesy to the people, why don't we do it while they're here? As the first item.
Well, the public meeting is at 1:00.
Right. The public meeting's at 1:00, and we will have that discussion at 1:00.
I think we should have that discussion at 1:00.
Mayor, so where are we now? I mean, are we carrying forth this motion, or is it killed completely? Just exactly where are we?
The real, the mayor, the chair has ruled on a point of order, which, as Dr. Whitaker and your attorney said, is not debatable on the ruling. I would like for us to have the vice mayor discussion in open session, and I would like us now to go in the closed session to handle these other two issues.
The appointments?
The appointments, as well as the litigation.
Well, if one can't be tied into one, then one can't be tied into the other. That's how I feel. You're either all for one or all for none.
The chair ruled the way he wanted to, and that's what he ruled.
I'm just going to say, we just.
I mean, he said, he said he can split, he can split.
Yes, the chair can do that. The chair just did that.
So do we need a restating for parliamentary, do we need a restating of the?
This is going to be fun, I'm going to say.
Yeah, absolutely. We got two attorneys, we got two attorneys here.
We got two attorneys.
PM Meeks.
Attorney Whitaker.
Moody was, made the motion, and Meeks seconded it. Mr. Moody, will you amend your motion to, to pull out the vice mayor from the motion?
No. I'm going to amend it. I believe that's the way it should be.
Yeah, exactly.
If we, we have a motion on the floor.
Question for you. If, if, if the chair, if the point of order took precedence, and the chair moved on the point of order, then.
Then it wasn't seconded. The second is not valid, because I recognize the point of order.
Right.
So it hasn't been seconded.
The motion is dead. You just need to do it over.
So the motion, so there's no.
The motion's out.
Okay. So. The chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for these other two items outside of the.
I'll move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia provisions of Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purpose. Discussion concerning council appointments as permitted under subsection A1, and consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation of Funkhouser, Edel versus City as permitted under subsection A7.
I need to make a motion. Can you show me in the guidelines where subsection A1, can you tie that into the appointments? It's not there. It's not there.
You don't, if, you don't have to talk about these things, any of these things in private. You can talk about all of them in public if you want to. The chair has ruled.
Right. And there's a motion on the floor, and if we don't get a second to do that, the chair's going to rule that we're going to have it all in open session. All right? Okay, Dr. Whitaker?
Just, just to raise a second point of order in line with what Mr. Meeks has just said, there is no language, the stronger language would have been what you had previously stated, but there's, there's no language in there pertaining to the appointments that we're about to make. It speaks, when you read, that it qualifies those appointments. It's not just a general appointment.
Chair has already ruled on that point, Dr. Whitaker.
Well, Mr.
If the chair wishes to modify it and take it out, that's the chair's prerogative.
Well, I'm going to agree with Mr. Meeks, it should be open. If we're going to do it, do it open. I don't see what the purpose of going into a closed session to discuss any of this is.
Any other discussion here? We'll make a, I, I'm, the chair's going to rule that we're going to have this entire discussion in open session. Except for the litigation piece. And so we will, we will go into close now for the litigation piece, and then we will open back up and have this whole discussion on the vice mayor position, as well as the other county points ones, in open session, and then at 1:00, we will go in and do, take the actual vote. Okay? All right? Is there a motion to? Yes, ma'am.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 for the following purpose. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation of Funkhouser, Edel versus City as permitted under subsection A7.
Second. Okay. They moved him properly second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in closed session, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting at the City Council as we do to people's work. Happy New Year to each and every one of you. It's always good to see the public, as well as our employees here present, and hopefully everyone had a wonderful and safe holiday season, and we're ready to hit the ground running. Members of the City Council, please stand for the invocation that will be given by Dr. Councilman Curtis Edmond Sr., and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Edmonds?
Gracious God, we thank you, Lord, for the outgoing year and beginning of a new year, as we deal with the business of our city. We thank you, God, that you will enable us to have level heads and levels of mind and good hearts, and look out for the welfare and well-being of our great city, for all the citizens of Portsmouth. Bless us as we now continue to discuss such matters here today. Bless us and keep us in your care, for we pray in the awesome name of Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible). And to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the City Council, if you would please indicate your presence electronically.
Seven members of the City Council are present.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 15-07, election of vice mayor, electronic roll call. We're open for discussions.
Okay, first of all, let me, Mr. Meeks, and let me go with Mr. Meeks first, and then Dr. Edmonds.
Thank you, Mayor. Two years ago, Paige Cherry, I voted for him to be vice mayor. Paige Cherry is a good friend of mine. I take him as a close friend of mine and neighbor. We're friends family-wise. But also, two years ago, when Elizabeth asked me to support her, I told her I couldn't because I was supporting Paige. And it puts you in a pickle when you have to, you know, you got two good friends, two good colleagues, that you have to pick through, or between. So I am in a crossroads, but I've talked to, and I've expressed my opinion and my thoughts to everybody. I did support Paige when the first time he ran. I mean, he wanted the appointment. And I did tell Elizabeth I would support her the next time. To me, the vice mayor is a title. You shadow the mayor. It's not one that I would want to do, not, nothing against you Kenny, just the time. But today, I am putting my support with Elizabeth, like I told her two years ago, and that's the only reason. It's not that I think Paige is better than Elizabeth, or Elizabeth is better than Paige, or, you know, that's the only reason. I just feel, I've stuck to my words since I've been on council, and I will continue. And that's my.
Okay. If we could, just to make sure, we clarify, before we actually get into that, should we open it up for individuals that are interested in running for the position of vice mayor, so we know exactly who we're dealing with? Would that be appropriate first? Any candidates that are interested? I see Elizabeth's hand, I see Paige Cherry's hand, anybody else? Okay, so we have two people that are interested in the vice mayor position. All right, Dr. Edmonds.
I'd just like to say, last year, being on the council, we had some ups and downs. We had some stability brought to the council when Paige Cherry was selected as vice mayor. And I think we've been on an upward clam. And I think we ought to continue in that process, because there's some greater things that yet we need to do. And the harmony that we were able to manage to establish, I think we need to keep that moving in the right direction, because it helps keeps us balanced in doing the things that are right for all the citizens of Portsmouth. So I think Paige Cherry would be a great person for our vice mayor again.
Are there any other comments from the other council members? What I'd like to do is, after your comments, I'd like to ask each one of the candidates if they would mind saying a few words, and then we'll, we'll actually take a vote. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, since Mr. Cherry has indicated his willingness to continue serving as vice mayor, I would just like to say that I'm in support of that, given the continuity and the intelligence that he brings to the position, and the work that has been done. So I would support that also.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Cherry, you want to make any comments?
First, let me thank my colleagues who have echoed their support. You know, I sought the position two years ago, and I feel like we've made some progress. And I know that from what I've observed and what I've been told, that we've done a good job, done a good job as vice mayor. It is mostly ceremonial, but it's also a position that you want someone in who, if the mayor is incapacitated for whatever reason, can, is willing, and able to step in, and that the city would not skip a beat. I spent 18 years working the grounds down here at City Hall on various boards and commissions before I ran for city council. Spent my, my work life in resource management, manpower, finance, et cetera, through my entire work history, except for the time I spent in. work history, except for the time I spent in the Army, and part of that was also doing finance. So I think I'm really qualified to sit in the position of Vice Mayor so that if some of the reasons the Mayor cannot step in. And sometimes the Mayor is required to be in two places at one time, and you need a Vice Mayor who can walk in on the spot, as I've had to do on some occasions, just being there and the Mayor being somewhere else, step right up to the plate and hit a home run. So I'd like to continue that capacity if it be the will of my colleagues to continue to serve the citizens, as they made a, I think it was a bold statement on November 4th, that they definitely wanted me to be around here for four more years, and I was sitting in the seat as Vice Mayor at that time. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, sir. Indeed, there isn't a person, a man up here that can't do the job. We were all elected by all of the population because we all have talents and a passion for this city to serve. It is strictly a ceremonial position. It doesn't even carry the title of Personnel Committee Chairman anymore. We made those changes in our rules two years ago. However, for all the talk about diversity in this community, I think, with the exception of Mr. Moody, I have more seniority on the council than anyone here. I've been at this table for over eight years, and I'm the only woman, and let's face it, I'm white. And I think if we want to talk about diversity in our community, what looks right is what is reflective of our community: black and white, male and female. I'm even getting gray hair now. So, you know, all of us can do the job, any one of us sitting here. If you'll recall, two years ago, I made the motion to support Mr. Cherry, and we'll be well-served by anybody here. But I think I've earned the respect of my colleagues. I think I've earned the position, and I think it's my time, and I appreciate your vote to my colleagues.
Thank you. We're now, and the Chair will now entertain a motion for the position of Vice Mayor. Okay, Dr. Edmonds?
You want to announce the candidate that...
Yes.
I move that we nominate and vote for Paige Cherry as Vice Mayor.
Second. Okay. Stand in the proper... Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second for Councilman Cherry as Vice Mayor. You're voting electronically. This item has been denied by a vote of 3-4. We can entertain another motion.
Okay. Chair, we'll entertain another motion.
Before Elizabeth Simmons is Vice Mayor?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 4-3.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Simmons. Is there anything you want to say before we get to the rest of the business? We look forward to working with you this year, and thank you for your years of service and your presence in the community. And again, as always, I look forward to working with all of our colleagues. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
May I just want to congratulate Ms. Simmons? Congratulations.
Very good. Thank you.
New business, 15-08, boards and commissions. We'll do that after. Electronic roll call. At this time, this is the point where you all can discuss the liaison positions if you'd like.
The Chair will actually entertain, however, we'd like to proceed with these. We have seven members of council with the Mayor and six other members of council that are currently at, well, five other members currently holding previous positions. All of these positions are open for any candidate or any member of the council. In the past, we have had somewhat of my term chaotic way of doing this. I have expressed my desires that I thought that the Mayor should individually get with each council member, try to find out where everyone would like to serve, and based on whether someone can be in attendance at the meetings, whether they have expertise in the area, and if all of those things are equal, the person with the seniority, I would put together a slate and present it to the council to be ratified. And that I have requested for two different times and has been rejected. And so I will offer that again to allow the Mayor to get with each member of council and see where we can best fit and put together something so we can have coverage throughout our community with all of our different boards and commissions, and to bring it back for the council to be ratified at the next meeting. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Might come as a shock to you. I've proposed that in the past. The more I've thought about it, I think it brings more order to the selection process. I would add one caveat, and that would be that you and the Vice Mayor get together and bring your joint recommendations to council and see if some of us feel it needs any tweaking or not. But I'm in favor of that process with the addition of the Vice Mayor taking part in that and y'all getting your heads together. I think between the two of you, you certainly are pretty darn familiar with the council members and what we've served on in the past and where our likes and dislikes are and where our strengths and weaknesses are. So I support that with that addition.
You're right. I am shocked, because I think you've rejected it in the past. Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I support what you're requesting. I'm surprised that you're requesting it because under the city charter, it says that you are the ceremonial head. And I'm surprised that, over the years, that authority has been denied to you as part of the ceremonial head, you would appoint persons to different boards and commissions. And so the request really is not necessary because it's already part of the authority that you have. And I would hope that in line with this, that this council, in dealing with rules, procedures, and the ethics, that we would not just make situational rules, but that we would follow the rules and procedures that we have already agreed upon so that the integrity of the council is always maintained. If each of us decides to become a mob or four, then we have chaos. And so we need to make sure that we're following the rules and the procedures. And so I'm in agreement with that authority also, since we are, since you brought up some of the authority. I think that we need to look at also in regards to not just this appointment power, but some of the other powers that the Mayor should have and has had in the past that has been usurped. And so I'm in agreement with your request, although I don't think the request is necessary because you already have the authority under the charter to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cherry?
Well, Mayor, I'm going to respectfully disagree. I don't think you have that authority on the charter because, as you said, the position is ceremonial, and that each member of this council has an equal vote on all items, and the Mayor carries no veto power, no extra vote, and his vote is not weighted in any way. So, and I'm fully capable of looking at this and telling you what I would like to vote on. I don't remember the process being chaotic. I don't remember there being an argument at all when we went through this process, and probably many of them would not change, with the exception of what Ms. Randall had, how we wanted to distribute it, and if there was something someone wanted. We never had an argument about anybody getting that position. So I don't see the necessity of you having that authority to just appoint members of council when we were all equally elected by the people. All things should be discussed and agreed to a consensus by the entire body.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Simmons? Vice Mayor Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Everybody's agreeing with everybody in making history today. I'm going to agree with Dr. Whitaker. The fact of the matter is, history will show, Dr. Whitaker, that the Mayor did use to appoint these types of things, and quite frankly, late in Mayor Holly's career, the council sort of took that authority away from him in his declining state at that time. And I don't have any problem with you or you and I, I mean, anybody here could run through and see who's available. A lot of times, these appointments to these commissions are not only, you know, who's interested in a topic, who has expertise, but who's available to go to a meeting that may be at 10:00 in the morning on the peninsula or 2:00 in the afternoon in Virginia Beach. That factors in too, since most of us work, or those that require that the Mayor be in attendance and sometimes two places at once. So no matter what happens, whether you appoint or we decide as a group, which I thought worked fine two years ago, this body has to vote on it anyway. So, you know...
Okay. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Ms. Simmons, thank you for bringing that history and the truth to that matter, something that we knew. And I just want to make sure that when we speak of a ceremonial position, that Mr. Cherry, I know you referenced that he's the ceremonial head, but ceremonial, I'm not sure how you're defining it, but as a ceremonial head, there are things that are ritually done of importance, and this is one of those things of importance that is ritually done by the council each year. And so the Mayor being the ceremonial head, just like the city manager, has authority to assign, point persons to positions. At this level, the Mayor would have that power, which Ms. Simmons has expressed, has been done in the past. And I think we need to reconcile some of the things that council has done in regards to the Mayor's authority if we're going to continue to move forward in the right direction. And I think part of that reconciliation is what we're doing right now, recognizing the Mayor as the ceremonial head of the government, therefore giving him that power. We pay the Mayor, I believe, additional. Is that correct? We pay the Mayor additional, not much. The Mayor runs on a separate ticket, and so to say that the Mayor is just the same as any other council member is not exactly true according to the... There are some expectations and authority that come with the position of Mayor that we need to return the respect to.
I want to be there with Dr. Whitaker. If this body decides to do it the way that the Mayor do, as it went all votes, I'll comply. But that was my, no, that was my opinion.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
I was going to just say that Ms. Simmons is absolutely correct. Mayor, when I came on council in '98, Mayor Holly was making the appointments, and I would say that was a recommendation of appointments that was still up to council, could certainly say, "I don't like that," or "How about, I can't be there on a Tuesday, but maybe Dr. Whitaker can." They always need a little tweaking, but I think Ms. Simmons' recollection of that is absolutely correct. The Mayor had it previous. I recommended that collaboration perhaps with the Vice Mayor. Obviously, that'd be up to your discretion, but the bottom line is, Mr. Cherry says, council votes on it, so I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you.
As I said before.
Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, Mayor, I think it ought to remain with the Mayor and let the Mayor decide who he wants to assist him. He might be more than just the Vice Mayor, but I think it ought to lie with you.
Thank you. And let me just say, I really appreciate this conversation, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to converse with each and every one of you to make sure we have coverage in all of these areas. There have been times when we've gone places that no one was there, and sometimes we go and everybody's there. And I really think that within our community, and this is just my personal opinion, that we, there should be an elected official, at least one of us, at any major event within our community. The politics is over, the campaigning is over. If there's something going on in our community, someone should be present, and I think our citizens deserve that. That has nothing to do with the appointment piece. It is something that I hear a lot as I travel throughout the city, and I see the members of council that normally attend various functions and ones that only attend the things that they like. And I, really, in this whole name and sake of harmony and working together, I really would like to see us do this the right way. I would like to be able to get your input, and I would like to be able to make sure that we have members that are at the meetings. I have had liaison people in the past, Dr. Whitaker. I appreciate you bringing that up. I have had people call and contact and want to know about the absence of a certain member. And because I did not have the authority or wasn't given the authority, I never talked to this council person about the absentee nor reassigned someone else because I didn't have the authority to do it in the first place. So I really do appreciate that because I think it's important on all of our liaisons and all of our boards that we have coverage and we have people there representing the city. A lot of these citizens that volunteer on these boards take it very seriously, and when they look and don't see a council member there, it bothers them, and I don't blame them because we asked them to volunteer, we asked them for their time, and it needs to be someone there that if they don't need to come to the full council, we have a liaison that could convey that information back to them based on the member of council. And in our meetings, during liaisons and committee reports, we would report to the full board if there's something that we collectively needed to do. So I really appreciate that, and I'll end with that, and if it pleases the council, we will adjourn this meeting. I will get with each and every one of you, and by the next meeting, we will have a slate that I will present to the full council for ratification. And if that's okay, we do have a motion for a housekeeping matter for cancellation and postponement of future meetings in the event of inclement weather. It was brought to our attention by the attorney during the work session, and we all kind of liked the idea, so we make sure that the public always knows if we're in fact having to counsel a meeting because of inclement weather or something, the meeting will be the next Tuesday unless there's something there that causes us a holiday, then we would just kick everything to the following regular scheduled meeting. And so with that, the Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that the City Council fix Tuesday following any regular meeting date found and declared by the Mayor or the Vice Mayor in the Mayor's absence to be hazardous for members to attend due to weather or other conditions as the date to which the regular meeting shall be continued. In the event that the Tuesday following a regular meeting is a holiday or otherwise unavailable to meet, the original regular meeting shall be counseled.
Madam Clerk?
We have a motion and a second to add this item to the agenda. You're voting electronically.
To add the item. Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to reset.
No, she's doing it. There you go. You can vote now. The additional item is adopted 7-0. Now the motion for the item.
Ms. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we're going to be the Chair of the regional jail.
Before we do that, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. We need to act on that?
We need a motion and a second.
Now to the, okay, Mr. Moody. All right, then we'll get back to you.
Mayor, I move that the council adopt the previous red motion.
Okay.
Check.
Madam Clerk?
We have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, we're going to be the Chair of the regional jail this month.
That's correct.
I would, you know, recommend, I know me and Bishop talked, that he stays on that because he'll be the Chair for the city.
Okay. I think that's a great idea, but I wanted to talk with Dr. Edmonds.
Do they have any meetings between now and then? I don't know when it changes over, because I hadn't talked to you about it, but I think we need to keep that.
Okay. He's right now listed as the alternate. Ms. Randall was the primary, and if there is something to happen, Bishop, before the next meeting, I'm sure you will represent the council at that meeting before we formally ratify that. But I think that's a very good idea, and I think we look forward to Portsmouth being the Chair of the regional jail authority this time around. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I don't... Yes, I don't know if I need to make a request to amend the agenda, but I did have a question about the agenda formation process here on council.
Okay.
Am I in order to?
No, you're in order, yes, sir.
I had requested from the clerk, and she did respond very well in regards to how the agenda items are put on the agenda. And I also CC'd Mr. Wilson, and he informed me that normally the city manager prepares the agenda. And I have a concern with that because the city manager works at the pleasure of the city council. And so therefore, it should not be the unilateral power of the city manager to present an agenda to the group that it works at the pleasure of. And so once again, in the spirit of following rules and policies and procedures, I would think that the mayor would be in line with preparing the agendas for the meeting. There may be some consultation with the city manager, but it shouldn't be that the person who is working at the pleasure of a board creates the agenda for the board. That's part of the ceremonial head of government, the mayor's power. Once again, I would think that was probably something that the mayor used to do, but it's an authority that falls under the ceremonial powers head of government.
I think, Dr. Whitaker, and I'll defer to clerk here, but it's done several ways in different cities, but most of them, the mayor has agenda responsibility to make sure that the agenda is prepared. But in some cities, they do not. They have consultation. I'm okay with either one. I, again, I want to make sure that we're operating in a manner that we're all, that's conducive to all of us. And if there are items that we need to submit on agenda, if there are things that we need to discuss, it would be courteous of each member to contact the mayor of something that you would like added to the agenda. But we do have during our regular meetings, a point in time where members of council can add items to the next meeting, and then we can deliberate whether or not we want those items added at that time. I'm flexible either way.
We have a draft.
And get it, right. And we'll get a draft, you'll get agenda briefs by the manager, and making sure that everything that we have that are on par. I guess some of the concerns, well, I see the pros and cons in both ways, sir, so I appreciate your comment. Yes, sir.
Right. My issue is not adding to an agenda. It's the actual.
Formation.
Preparation who establishes what the agenda is now. As far as adding an item to it, I'm quite sure council members can do that. But the issue becomes who's controlling the agenda. And I believe that as the charter prescribes you as the ceremonial head, that that would be, once again, a responsibility. You wouldn't go into the city manager's meeting setting the city manager's agenda. That would be out of order. And so it's out of order according to our charter as the ceremonial head that you're not involved in setting the agenda. So I just want to point that out.
Okay. Mr. Moody.
I was going to ask my colleague, are you making that in the form of a motion or a suggestion?
No. The, I didn't amend the agenda. I think it's something that we, not for a motion, it's something that we should consider at our next meeting, looking at restoring that authority or follow, not even restoring, but following the rules and procedures that we have.
Is there a historical perspective or something like that? Yeah, okay. Ms. Simmons.
Yes, sir. I can't imagine a part-time mayor that would have the, and I'm not speaking of you specifically, but any mayor in the Commonwealth of Virginia who would have the knowledge and the understanding and the clerk's knowledge of putting the agenda together and knowing when the, you know, grants are coming in. I mean, I don't mean to say anything, that's what we pay this professional staff for, in my opinion. And we have, the mayor has briefings, you know, every few days with the manager. We all get a copy of a draft agenda 10 days out, which we can, you know, have conversation about. I don't think anybody's ever asked for anything that was denied. I think that's a horrible imposition to put on any mayor who does not have the legal expertise and the day-to-day knowledge of the inner workings of the city to do that. I mean, I think that's what we paid the people for.
Mr. Moody.
Well, just to add to that, on the agenda, there's an agenda item submitted by council, and that's certainly not limited. Most of us use it to recant what we've participated in, but certainly not limited to that. You can suggest and make a motion to do anything for that matter during that time. That's each council member's time. So I don't, all of us, Ms. Simmons is right, all of us have suggestive input on what the agenda is going to be, reference the draft that we get earlier in the week.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yeah, just to make sure that we're not confusing what I'm saying, I'm not saying that the mayor should not be in some type of collaboration with the city manager. Of course, that's the case. But the ultimate issue becomes who develops that agenda. And I'm saying that the mayor should have that ultimate authority as ceremonial head, not that the mayor would create it outside of consultation with the city manager as to what the necessary items are. And so just want to make sure you're clear on that because it's not the expectation for the mayor to know what you're calling the administrative functions. That's for the city manager. However, to present the presentation of the agenda that comes to us, there should be some collaboration there with the mayor, city manager.
That makes sense.
I think y'all need every.
Okay, let's actually discuss that at the next meeting. And in the middle of that, I'll actually get with the manager, and when we actually contact each of you, we can kind of get your feelings on that issue. There is some validity to us being a council and not approving an agenda until it's actually presented. So someone up here probably should say, yeah, the manager presented the agenda to the mayor, the mayor has approved it. And then when we put it out for the public, that at least a member of council, which is the ceremonial head, has approved the manager's agenda. Does that even make sense? Just think about that, and then we'll come up with something. We don't want to fix or break anything that's already working, but I appreciate the suggestion, and I do, and I'll rely on each one of you to give me your feedback. So when we get with the manager, and we'll come up with something that we all work with. But thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask the city clerk to speak on this, please? How it's been done and why it's been done, because I know you now.
The city council's agenda has a section called City Manager's Report. Those items are formulated by the manager per the request of council. There are some items on there, for example, the grant items, that are administratively coming through city departments. And those we put on there as fast as we know about them. But a lot of times, the items that the manager brings before council have been the items that have been previously discussed in your work session and with the consensus of council are coming forward. There are some things that, like we said, are administratively brought to council. There, I've been with the clerk's office since 91, and I don't recall a time ever when the mayor had any part in formulating the council agenda. Because we're working, the manager, the attorney, and myself are working collaboratively with the council to bring the items forward. And as you said, the mayor is part-time. There's, this is a continuing process. We're starting on the next agenda two weeks, at least two weeks prior to that agenda coming to you. So you're getting a draft when you do. We're cutting it close when we even send you that, knowing that it's subject to change by the council. So we're, this is a continuing, hands-on process, and it can be very tedious, not only on the management side, but I have a feeling the mayor would want to. But there could be conversation between management and the mayor and council if more conversation is warranted.
Okay. Mr. Moody.
I was going to just say, the manager, whether it's this manager or any manager, is chief operating officer of the city, and I don't think he needs to go down the ladder to have an agenda that we all have input in, approved by anybody, whether it's this mayor or future mayor. I've never seen that done, and I guarantee you, it's not done in the other cities as well. So I think what we, system we have has been working for a lot of years, and I see no reason to change it.
Okay. Let me just ask, John, Mr. Manager, would you mind chiming in on this? I know you've got quite a few years of experience in this and in your other areas. Have you seen anything any different than the way we're doing it now? Or do you even share the comment?
I think Deborah did a great job on summarizing it. It's a collaboration, not only between Deborah, George, and me, but with council, too. We bring those things that are important to you. I mean, we keep our finger on your pulse, and so we know what the important items are and what the timing is. So it's very much a collaborative process.
Okay. And it's done throughout the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Whitaker, I'll see you.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that, just as we said in the previous session, just because something is a past practice doesn't mean that it has been a practice in accord with rules and procedures. So a past practice, just because you've been doing it that way, doesn't justify that it continues that way. I'm just bringing up the fact that we have a charter that spells out who the ceremonial head of government is, and part of that authority would be in, working with the agenda, not developing it totally, but at least having some authority over that agenda that's presented to council. So I just want to make sure that, because if we were going by past practices, what we just did today, voting on the vice mayor publicly, changing the procedure, that wouldn't have happened today. And so past practices, it's not justified future practices.
Point well taken. All right, thank you. Mr. Moody.
Well, actually, we've always voted on the vice mayor publicly. So that is not a new.
You haven't discussed it, though.
Yes, it's been discussed publicly, that same type of vote that we have here. It's also been discussed in closed session, but it's always come out here on the floor, and we've had discussion on it.
For final ratification.
And we've had an audience out here to witness it. So that is nothing new.
All right, thank you. All right, Whitaker, I appreciate everybody's time. If there's anything else that anyone want to bring up for the good of the bodies? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.